Alrighty, I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Just five minutes late, so that's not too bad, right? Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Bobby Godby. I am the Director of Communications for Mountaineers for Progress, which is one of our co-hosts for tonight, along with the West Virginia League of Women Voters. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. We have a pretty ambitious night ahead of us, so we're gonna do our best to stay on schedule with the help of some good structure and some lovely timekeeping. We should be able to cruise through the night. So, to get us kicked off, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. One of my favorite quotes is actually, "To make democracy work, we must be a nation of participants, not simply observers." And by taking the time to come out tonight, by being part of our livestream, which we have folks who are already tuning in from the interwebs across, we're gonna say, the world, tuning in to hear what our candidates have to say. So, thank you all for being active participants. This is our community and your investment, and we appreciate your time. So, as I said, ambitious nights, so we'll get down to the nuts and bolts. A few housekeeping things. Restrooms are out this door here. You can, I think, still come in that way. You can also walk around that way. Both men's and women's restrooms are that way. We also have snacks, so you should eat those. It's gonna be an eventful night, but we're gonna go along, so make sure you grab something to eat and drink as you see fit. We do have two forums, so we're gonna start with Mon County Commissioner, and then that's will be for about 50 minutes. We'll have a short intermission, depending on how time is going, and then we'll set up for the State Senate. Our format's gonna be pretty similar across the forums. We'll start with opening statements. We'll then move into a series of preset questions, and then we hope to open up as much time as possible for audience questions. If you haven't already submitted a question, you can do so now. There's index cards over here on, what is that, stage left, right? Yep, thank you. High school thespian. Stage left here with pens. She's modeling lovely. If you are finished with your question, you can kind of hold it up. We have a gaggle of folks over here who have grabbed those. We're gonna do our best to get through as many audience questions as possible, but that will probably involve us collecting them and putting them together by theme. So, it may not be asked exactly the way you written, but we're doing our part to make sure the spirit of the question is asked. We'll then do closing statements, assuming that we're able to keep on our timeframe, and then we'll go from there. Our lovely timekeeper, I just want to thank to Ms. Barbara Brown here. She knows what's up. Gentlemen, you'll be following her cue, and we'll get started here with opening statements. And we'll go ahead and have Andrew Price.
Thank you for coming out. I appreciate any time. I have a microphone. I'm so used not to doing that, so I yell wildly. Thanks for coming. Very good. Thanks for coming out. Thanks for participating. And just remember to grab as many of your friends the next few weeks when we go to vote, and help them participate too. A little bit about myself, I'm new as a public service servant, potentially. We are farmers from the Western Indiana County. Primarily, we've done that, and families done that, for nearly 200 years in this county. I spent 30 years in the Army, traveled the world, various fun places there, with lots of heat and lots of sand, and currently work as a first responder and helicopter pilot with Airabex Medical Services in Wessels County, West Virginia. So, we're looking to make a change, to come over into this part of a new life, as far as public service and county commission. Some of the things that have brought me to this point, that you should know, is I see that even though we have quite a large number of jobs, we kind of stagnated a little bit, and perhaps need to push a little bit further. I've spent the summer talking to as many of the job creators in this county as possible, trying to learn what they need, what they desire, what they're not getting, what the county commission can be providing, what they should be, and maybe what they maybe don't need. I don't know. That's part of the process too. What I would like to do, as far as my goals in the county commission, what I'd like to see in five years, when we're sitting at this table again, if you put your faith in me, I would love to see us, at some point, be standing here and not talking about how many people we feed. I would like to say that we're down 10% from last year, that we're down 50% from last year, because our jobs have continued to climb, our blue collar jobs have continued to grow, that our community services have continued to grow, and we've finally solved all the problems that we have. Obviously, that's not going to happen, but it would be lovely if we could. So, I would ask you to put your faith in me in November, and thank you for listening to me. Looking forward to talking.
I hope you don't mind I'm gonna sit. My name is Tom Bloom, and I would like to thank you for hosting this forum. Over the past five years, I've been honored to serve the citizens of Montague County. When you talk about trust, collaboration, determination, or partnership, those are my four cornerstone of what I've done as a county commissioner. I've tried to be hands-on, to tackle the difficult issues that our county faces, and to work in tandem with my colleagues on the commission to continually improve the lives of the citizens of the county. As we meet this evening, we are all concerned about the conditions of our roads, the lack of respect and adequate support for education, our ongoing opioid epidemic, and the partisanship that unfortunately can be an obstacle to our progress. However, I do not see partisan divides as an obstacle, but as an opportunity in our county. Using various methods of communication and constructive dialogue has allowed the commission to become a more transparent body, and more importantly, a more accountable to the citizens. The county commission has become the first in the state to offer the Mon County Checkbook Program, which allows residents to monitor and hold their elected officials accountable in real time. I look forward to working with the State Auditor's Office in the future to bring in all the city governments in Mon County and the school board. We should be justifiably proud of the efforts that we have made in tackling recycling in the county. This past week, at the Solid Waste Authority meeting, we learned that Montague County now is the distinction of the number-one recycling county in West Virginia. The program is so much more than recycling. It has morphed into a community, a collective community-driven endeavor to help our environment. Understanding the issues that face our county, I believe, has brought us closer together as a community. For all these reasons, I'm asking each of you for your continued support for this upcoming election.
Thank you, gentlemen. You did a pretty good job there, keeping with Ms. Barbara Brown. Alright, we'll start with our first question. Which will be in the next slide. Which will be on the next slide. There we go. So, supporters of annexation say businesses that benefit from the population of Morgantown should pay their fair share to help provide better services to the county. Opponents say businesses have the right to choose where they operate, are free to locate outside of municipalities where they would have to pay taxes, and additional taxes may drive businesses away. Do you support or oppose growing the metropolitan area through annexation and minor boundary adjustments? Why or why not? And we'll start with you, sir.
My answer's gonna be very simple. I am a sitting county commissioner, and I'm not allowed to answer that question, because when we go to vote on it, then it would say that I've already have a preconceived notion. So, by law, I'm not allowed to answer that question.
Thank you. And I can voice my opinion on this, and my opinion is thus that it has to be beneficial to both parties. It's my firm belief that I'm not a big person for taking rights away from people. Now, if that party that is being annexed is receiving services improperly, then I think that's a whole different ballgame right there. Now, I mean, I'm not a sitting person, and I'm sure I will be educated on the fallacy of some of the things I say by the state when we go through our training. But, as a farmer and a landowner, I think you have to be very, very careful about attaching taxes to property, and it has to be beneficial to both parties.
Thank you. Second question. How would you foster collaborative working relationship with the municipalities in the county, and what challenges do you anticipate? And we'll start with you, Mr. Price.
Well, I've literally spent my summer traveling. It's kind of been the traveling Price for Candidate Commission show here. And a lot of what I've done is, in fact, I just got done talking to Granville just yesterday, in fact. Mayor and I had some chat there. There is a definite concern of a lack of communication between the various entities, whether that's neighborhood associations, whether that's mayors in Blacksville, mayors in Granville, Star City. There is a deep concern that there is just no communication, no feedback from the county commission. They are feeling, I don't know, they're obviously, if you want something and you don't get it, it does tend to make you unhappy. So, how much of that is that? I don't know. But, as it stands right now, the feeling throughout the county is just the fact that the county commission stays in Morgantown, doesn't come out and talk to them, and doesn't necessarily explain the decisions that they're making and why they made them. So, thank you.
Come on, make sure again, make it what challenge. First of all, I think there needs to be an understanding that we have five city governments, we have a university, and we also have a county commission, that all have five separate organizations. I believe that one of our major problems is they're all living in silos, because nobody wants to work together. It is time that we work together to provide service and combine the services. Now, whether you call it metro government, or metro news, or whatever, the problem is that we have to work together. And, for example, next, on October 27th, we were meeting to discuss concerns and issues with all the city council members and the county commission. I believe that the county commission is available to talk on any issues, but we can't read people's minds. If they don't come to us and ask us their questions and concerns, then we would have difficulty understanding what they want.
Thank you. You guys are cool. Alrighty. Next question. How can the county take a proactive role in improvement of services that the city cannot provide? And you can see some examples there. Road maintenance, snow removal, paid firefighters, curb side recycling.
I apologize not to be interrupt, but I'm not sure I understand the question. How can the county take a proactive role in improvement of services the city cannot provide? Well, the city has their own program, the county has their own program. But let me give you, for instance, what we did. Two years ago, when we had that major snowstorm, what we did is we got WVU hospitals, we had WVU City of Morgantown, clean and shovel the roads from the interstates so the hospital lanes would be open. This freed up DOH to do other roads. Again, one other thing that we have started was a pilot project on River Road. We have put up $150,000. The state at DOH is putting up $600,000, and we're now cleaning the culverts and also moving forward on seven miles of River Road. So, again, if that is generally the question, but I want to clear, we are not allowed to go into any city, and the city at the same time can't go out to any government. This would have to be a working cooperation by law.
Well, a couple of things. Historically, back a few years ago, there was a movement to combine the buying power of municipalities together in order to reduce the cost. That unfortunately fell apart. I definitely would love to see that, to address the cooperative issues. There is a huge problem in this county of what I'd call a coal miner mentality, that we sit in our little, our small towns, and we don't want to share resources. But, in order for us to prosper and grow in this county, we're going to have to. The buying power of a combined group is greatly improved over a single entity. That's definitely a role that the county commission can play. Some things that I think are misguided, I personally do not like the idea of using county funds inappropriately on roads. DOH has programs for that. I think we need to be pushing our money and time to improving things like the I-79 River Road interchange up there, which would provide access to Booth and River Road. That, to me, is where we need to be partnering with private and state and DOH to get that moved ahead. That would solve a multitude of issues with River Road. But, it all comes down to really asking the various groups to participate and be in the same room and talk together without fighting.
Do you support a county sales tax with the revenue generated going towards providing services to the county residents? Why or why not?
I think I've already said how my feeling of additional taxes. Right now, we've operated with an excess budget, and we've reduced it, they've reduced our property taxes. I don't necessarily believe that we need to add an additional tax. It always concerns me when we start taking additional taxes and there's no end in sight. So, if that tax were designated to a specific item, possibly, but without that, I'm not a big believer in just creating taxes in general funds to possibly solve a problem in the future.
It's very difficult when you have a question like this to support a county sales tax. First of all, it's not realistic at this stage, because it's the law. We can't do it. So, first of all, the legislature would have to change the law to allow us to do it. The only way that's gonna happen is that you would have to give up, for example, if the legislature would say there's gonna be a county sales tax, then there would have to be a reduction in the property, in the personal property tax. Also, you have a problem, because you have the City of Morgantown that has a BNO tax, for example. How do you then oversee that? So, then you have different areas of the county having different taxes. It's something that I am not for at this time. We had a locality bill, which we wanted to pass, that got changed by the Chamber of Commerce, but a general sales tax at this time is not realistic, because the services are being provided. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So, we did move aside some of the preset questions, because people are participating in their democracy and have sent along a series of questions here. So, we'll start with our audience questions, and we will go from 90 seconds time to 60 seconds, just for clarity's sake. Alrighty. In recent months, Mon County residents have expressed concerns over the abrupt closure of River Road in Westover, and the perceived lack of communication around those closures. How important do you feel transparency is concerning issues that affect everyday citizens, and what do you propose can be done to improve communication about big decisions like these?
Well, first of all, transparency is probably the number-one goal that the county commission has and continues to do, whether you're on YouTube, whether you're watching West TV, whether you can now go on and do the Mon County Checkbook. That is available. The difference is, we have no control over God and the weather. And when the slides happen, for example, the DOH makes those decisions. As of, people do not want to know, but we have to tell you, there are 25 slides right now on the lower part. That's why they're not opening up. If they were to fix it, which is $3 million, and then a slide would happen and someone would die, you would have some serious problems. We are trying to keep the citizens available of what's going on, and again, say that there is an app that we're gonna be coming out with, with all the new construction of the roads, that we're gonna be working on and handing out in January.
Well, to address specifically the River Road, it's, I mean, I'm a farmer, I'm used to dealing with dirt and slides and different things like that, and quite honestly, I don't know that there's enough money to ever completely fix River Road down there. But, the other side of that that really concerns me is if you have an accident, they close it to Dupont up there, then you have no access to the schools. So, to me, you have to solve that question, and we, I think they started down that road with a forum they had a week or so ago, and they addressed the potential to put another interchange where River Road crosses 79. And like I said previously, I think that, to me, is the true answer right there, and now we could be looking at getting emergency services in there. I don't think, other than to service the locks and the people, MPC and the businesses down there, that we're going to ever reopen completely River Road. And otherwise, it would represent, I think, too much of a cost to you, the residents, that that money could be used on another road at much greater value to you. I do understand the people that live out there not having that access, but we can't impoverish ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you support Mon County adopting a noise ordinance? Will you work to make it happen? Just reading what you guys wrote.
I understand, and I don't mean to be funny, and I'm sorry if my face transmits a little bit, because I, you know, I live in the country, and I have cows and dogs and different things. I understand that's different when you live in a city and you have, everybody's very close to you. I'm not a fan of noise ordinances. I mean, they, in order to do them properly, you have to be so specific, and you have to catch the animal in the act, so to speak, and I don't really see how it's actually functionable. I do think that a greater discussion with your neighbors and working together might solve the issue better, so.
And the reason why we were both laughing is because I had mentioned right before we started, that that was one of the big issues several months ago, that was asked when he wasn't here, with Betty Wilder and myself. The problem is, you have to come up with some sort of a form that has a decimals, that would say what is acceptable, not acceptable. It's just not realistic, and especially in a county. County's different than the city, and I agree with Mr. Price on this issue.
Thank you. Are you committed to making the courthouse square more appealing and inviting with benches?
That was also the other question I told him that we spent half an hour on. I think people need to understand, benches is not the problem. You have benches because people are coming downtown. The problem is, years ago, you had two ladies shoe stores, you had a department store, you had clothing stores. People then came down and then walked through downtown and used the benches. That is not what is happening right now. And again, I am not for benches right now. We have a space for it, if we need to look at it right now, but at this time, it's just not something that, people do not understand what we deal with when the citizens leave the courthouse, and what you deal with in the morning before.
Well, I think the question about benches speaks to probably a greater problem, the concern of the homeless situation in Morgantown, and that there was some concern where the benches may facilitate the growth of that. I think that we, in order to get the benches back and get a more pedestrian-type downtown, we need to work much harder in solving some of the other issues that may come to the forefront because the benches are there. I mean, there are benches that are not suitable for sleeping on and staying, and I think that is a potential answer, but I don't think, I think it overshadows the true issue that we need to solve, and that is that the growth in the homeless situation downtown is not fair to them, it's not fair to the residents, so, thank you.
Thank you. We are gonna try something new, since we do have some time. So, we've actually had a couple of questions come in through the livestream that relate to things that you've said. So, instead of kind of powering through, bear with us, technology. So, going back, yes, to the question around noise ordinances, there's been a specific clarification around industrial noise. So, maybe we could spend just 60 seconds exploring that a little bit further, please. Who wants?
I'll go first.
Yeah, go ahead, please, thank you.
Yeah, just because I do not understand what quote "industrial noise" is and how it differs, so unless I have more information, I'll be very honest, I really don't know anything about that.
I assume that this has to do with the power plant downtown, is about the only thing that I can imagine.
Yeah, I think if, I'll do my best to clarify here. So, when we're thinking about kind of residential noise ordinances within the city, but as we're bringing in businesses and industry outside of the city limits, will there be any differences between those two?
You know, beyond what is already existing as far as state and federal ordinances on noise and set-asides for residents and that, I think that's probably gonna be covered in, if we have some sort of a planning instituted and we can work with, I think that's kind of the direction we need to go with that, and that would be covered in that. We're ways away from a realistic planning document right now, so if that gets tackled, then I think you're gonna answer that question.
Thank you. Thanks for indulging us there. We'll see if we need to do it again. Great. So, what building codes, subdivision regulations, or zoning ordinances does the county have to have more organized growth? And do we need more? And, Mr. Price, if you don't mind, go first, please.
You know, I think all of us look at West Run and we go, well, you know, if we knew today what we, if we knew then what we know today, we would probably have kind of changed the way West Run was put in, but we didn't, and there's several different subdivisions around the county and various things that, so, my point being is that we do need some sort of planning. The planning proposal document that was put out by the county really, to me, didn't allow participation and was kind of a cookie cutter from other areas, wasn't a realistic document. We need to have planning, but in order to get that planning, we have to involve all the entities and develop that plan, and it can't be dictatorial. We can't, we can't stop growth in this county by having planning, because, you know, your jobs, everything else, are gonna go away. So, yes, the answer, my short answer is yes, I think we need planning, no, I don't think we have a proper good document now, so.
What people might not realize is, we have four planning districts currently in our county. West Run, which has zoning, then you have Cheat Lake, Cheat Neck, and Stewartstown. Every one of those people got the vote, and they voted only in West Run for zoning. Now, the problem is, I am not for putting, forcing people into zoning. I believe that's why you have planning districts. However, there's one issue that I believe all of us agree on, and that's water runoff. And that is something we have to deal with, and that's what we are hoping to deal with under the new regulations, which would be just the water runoff.
Thank you. What proposals do you have for bringing jobs to Mon County and developing the county economy? Yep, we'll start with you, Mr. Price.
I actually brought something. Five years ago, we started a vision. People said, well, what were you gonna do? We started with Eastern Tiff and now the Western Tiff. This is what's bringing in jobs. We moved over 10,500 cubic yards of dirt. We have an enormous growth area in this area. We're about to have two housing developments in this area, and we're building extensively with some new businesses that are about to be announced. This is where the growth is gonna be right now. We're looking at thousands of jobs, and we're looking at over one, up to $1 billion worth of growth right now. That is what we started, and that's where we're at right now. None of this existed five years ago.
Well, I had the opportunity today, I spent about two and a half, three hours with Mr. Lynch, who's the developer, one of the key people with the West Ridge. I think, as a farmer, I'll put it in a kind of a system that I, if you're a cattle farmer and you count cows, you're probably going to lose your butt, because your job isn't to produce cows, it's to produce calves and sell them. My concern with some of the jobs, and actually a good portion of the jobs that will come into West Ridge, is that they're primarily cash register-type jobs. I think we have to balance our economy. You can't buy a $100,000 home on a minimum wage job. So, I don't want us to overshadow the need to develop Westover Industrial Park and the kind of industrial, blue-collar jobs that will replace the coal mining jobs that we've lost, the miling jobs that we've lost, the jobs that aren't being added at all by the university. We need to be looking at those long-term jobs with benefits rather than hotels.
Thank you. We'll build off that question just a little bit. So, obviously, we'll answer this a little differently based on your current role. So, the question is, what can be done, or what are we doing to bring in jobs that are not retail in nature? Yeah, sorry, Mr. Price, if that's you.
Well, I think we're looking at it, we're starting down that road, we're not moving as quick as we probably should. One of the key, I talked to Mr. Adria at Westover Industrial Glen. Some of the things that he needs in order for that program to accelerate is to have a better access. And Westover, I'm sure, would be happy to have a better access and get all the trucks, all the pipe trucks out of Dupont and Fairmont Avenue. We need to accelerate the interchange where River Road crosses 79. That will, if you look at the map that he's got, I mean, the jobs that Devil Create are incredible in there, and they're all blue collar, they're all heavy benefit jobs, and they are a way to bring families back to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. One of our strong differences between my opponent and I says he believes that our economy here is stagnated. It's not stagnated at all. In fact, today, it was announced that we are denying In fact, today it was announced that we are the ninth best, most livable, ninth best city to raise a family. Why? Because we're diversifying. We have medical, we have other opportunities. We have factories that solely are trying to grow in this area and we're bringing them in. We also have a quality of life that people don't realize. We're about to have a state-of-the-art swimming complex and track. That is bringing in new companies, new businesses. And I don't know who he was talking to about talking cash register jobs. I'm not permitted to say what those jobs are, but I can tell you that being built over there, they're not cash register jobs.
Thank you. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. In recent years, the opioid epidemic has become a problem in our community. How can the county commission help address this problem? And again, start with you, Mr. Price.
As I stated in my speech, it affects everyone, every family, whether you're wealthy, you're poor, it doesn't take any, it takes everybody. And one of the problems we are having is it also affects in business. Let me explain the problem. We have a great education system, so right away we can bring into business. We have the working force that wants to work, but we do not have a large enough working force that can pass a drug test. That is our number one problem we're having in this area. So basically, what we started, a program called DRIVE, we're coming out, we're about to make a major announcement in a couple of weeks, but we have to work together and also offer programs, aftercare programs too, and more beds. And that's something we can do with the university.
Well, like I stated, I'm a first responder. I'm out there on the first, on the front lines of this drug. I see it more often than I want to in the back of my helicopter. We also volunteer with the Claybattel Health Community Services. They do not go down as far as people using that service. There's sometimes 100 families in there. Almost all of those families work for a living. If you want to solve the drug problem, you've got to back up and say, well, how did we get there first? And a lot of times it's because dignity issues, your life just is not very good. And then you have to say, what are we going to do to solve it in the future? And the future is a better job. I mean, you've got to look to the future, you've got to put these people to work and they've got to have something to look forward to because drugs, if you're taking drugs, you're doing it because it takes away from the problems that you have, by and large. And that's not the whole answer, I understand that. But you also need to do the best, just like Tom's saying. It's a threefold approach. We can't just do a symptom, we have to do it all.
Thank you. We're going to integrate some interwebs question here. So this is from our livestream. That means that more than two people are watching us. Probably my mom and my dad, so that's me. Hi, guys. So here's our question. What is your position on consolidating all of the different municipalities in the greater Morgantown area to maximize our buying power? Would you actively work with municipalities to make this a reality? Mr. Price, I believe.
Yeah.
Well, I think, to me, that's a two-part question. Yes, as I stated earlier, I think that we do need to come together as a metro group, I don't know, something that we do able to buy in and increase our buying power. I am not a metro government person, however. I believe that each, you should maintain your sovereignty. If you're Star City, if you're Granville, if you're Westover, you all want to be, you maintain your sovereignty as a town and you owe it to the people that live there to do that. So the big question is, yes, I do want to see us get together, combine our resources and increase our buying power and pass that on to the taxpayers.
I do agree. I think we have to combine them, but I think we also have to be realistic. For this community to move forward in the next 40 or 50 years, we have to be realistic. We are not competing Westover versus Granville versus Fairmont versus Chalm. We are competing with Pittsburgh, we're competing internationally. And when you're small little silos doing this, you're not getting the best and you could still keep your identity by combining together and working together. And I think that's what we have to do and I believe the public wants that. I don't think they want to pay for five different police forces. I think it's now time that we have police force with substations, for example, and those are the kind of things we need to look at.
Thank you. How can the county best support the public schools? And I'll start with you, Mr. Price.
Well, 34 years as a guidance counselor, I think one of the things, and I was just talking with Sarah today, was that I would like to sit down with them and the county Board of J's and see what kind of grants we could work together. Because if you really want to get a grant, you get several different governmental bodies working together. And I think the key is when education is the number one question businesses ask about when you're moving into a community. And I believe education is key, both at this level and also at the college level. We have a university. And I think the thing is we need to work together and I'll be point blank and I'll probably irritate some people. We cannot allow delegates to go down there and take that money away from WVU and other areas and give it to the southern part of the state.
Well, again, I had the opportunity to go to the Veterans Job Fair today at Mylan and this is definitely a question that I was talking to. My concern is that our school system, especially on the non-college tracked student, is not reflective of the changing economy and needs to be more fluid. For instance, you still have to, from Claybattel where I live, the student still has to go to those core students, our classes at Claybattel along with M-Tech. To me, we need to modify the system enough to where that student can go to M-Tech, spend the whole day there, receive all the training and not have that hour and a half of bus travel. Those kind of things will make us more competitive in the job market and will put out a product that they can take these kids and put them to work as soon as they come out, if they choose that. And if they choose to go to college, then they should do that. And I think we do a good job there, but we're not doing a good job of supporting our growing economy in this county.
All righty. So in the spirit of our ambitious schedule tonight, we're going to combine one of the questions from the audience to inform your closing statements. How do I like that? All right. So again, as a reminder, we'll do two minutes here and we'll even give you just a second to think about it. But the question is, what is your vision for the future of North Central West Virginia beyond Mon County? What are your plans to work with our neighbors to continue to prosper? It's a good question, remember.
I think the key situation we have to realize is we have to diversify, we have to work together and we have to build partnerships. And that's something that I believe this county commission has done and that is why we are so successful. We've lowered the property tax, we've cut down our budget and we're still providing the same amount of services. At the same time, you have an elephant in the room, which is the opioid crisis. It's something we have to deal with, we have to deal with it directly and we have to offer programs. And as I said, it affects everyone. I keep, I keep thinking the big thing here is that it's important, and I will close with, whether the issues in the county touch the residents of Beulah in regards to the cleanup of illegal dump sites or the transportation needs for our less fortunate and elderly members affected by the closure of the in touch and concern, I have tried to roll up my sleeves and I find real, and here is what we need, sustained solutions. Anybody can throw out a solution, but a sustained solution is what we have to do in this county. Whether it's the pantry plus more program that we realize the needs of all Montague County children need to be fed before they go to the school and they're able to not have to worry about it, whether we have enough jobs for the people in our community, it is important to realize that we are a mixture of a conglomerate of individuals who need to work together. And I believe Team Montague is key and that's what happens.
Well, I'll stand up again because I'm a podium instructor sometime, that's what a lot of my Army leadership development went towards. So to address the question here, Metro Morgantown, I think you need to understand, and I'm sure we all do, Morgantown is the driver for Northern West Virginia, whether that's Green County, Pennsylvania, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, Preston County, Harrison, Marion, Wessell, Taylor, we drive this state. We have a responsibility to grow. I've kind of gone back and forth and saying, well, you know, I think that my message should be, I'm a greedy person, because I am a greedy person. I want you to have a job and live in Morgantown or in Montague County, but I'm happy if you do one or the other. So I think the county commission has a responsibility to go out here and build those relationships with these other counties and thereby build these jobs. And I'll take somebody living in Morgantown and working in Fairmont, but I want one or the other. But I want to, because we all grow together once we're all productive and we reduce our opioid issues, we reduce the junk that we have along the roads, we live better, cleaner, happier. But we've got, the jobs come first. I mean, it's a chicken and the egg thing. We have got to be productive and we have to feel productive in our communities, we have to reach out and feed those citizens that need it, whether that's the kids in the schools or whether that's our elderly at home. It takes all of us working together and building our communities. So it's not one thing or the other. It's not one thing that's going to build and not one thing that's going to fix. It's going to take a long-term program. I mean, five years, if I can get one of those things done, I'd be extraordinarily happy. We didn't get here overnight, we're not going to fix it overnight. So I think we have got a good, strong head start. We've got a lot of work ahead. We've got a wonderful county and wonderful citizens that are well-trained and hard-working. I look forward to a great future as your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you both. Well, congratulations to you both for following directions this first time, so we appreciate that. Congrats on that task and that's why we're here in the past, so congratulations on that. For folks in our audience, we will take a brief intermission. We are going to get started promptly at 8:01. So if you could be back here at 8:01, we'll get started with our next forum. Thank you.
has just the right tire for you. And if you want your ride to really stand out, ask about tire and wheel combinations. Get the most out of your vehicle with the perfect set of shoes from the Tire Lady at Rainbow Tire and the Tire Lady will take care of you. At the Landing Dental Spa, our goal is to provide quality dental care at a relaxed spa-like atmosphere. Dental chairs with heat and massage, warm neck wraps, and personal TVs make your appointment as stress-free as possible. Located off the Pierpon exit, now accepting new patients of any age. Call 304-594-2200 today and visit our website at www.the landingdentalspa.com to schedule an appointment. The Landing Dental Spa, a healthy smile with peace of mind.